Good morning. It's great to be with you. My name is Michael Berlucci and I, it's really my great honor and privilege to represent residents of Virginia Beach on our city council from the Rose Hall District. I was elected last year to complete an unexpired term of the previous member. And I'm a candidate now for reelection for a full four-year term. So that I have the opportunity to continue to serve residents of Virginia Beach. And the reasons that I was a candidate last year and that I sit before you today as a candidate really are the same. It's that I love Virginia Beach, was born and raised here, educated in beach public schools. My family lives here, friends, many, many friends live here. And I really wish to be part of a team that works together to improve life in Virginia Beach for everyone. We have a great community, as you know, very strong, very vibrant. And, uh, community and, uh, we have some opportunities to build upon the, um, ask the many, uh, assets that we have as a community in, in order to, um, in, in order to make life better for all Virginia Beach residents. The priorities that I, um, uh, will focus on as a, as a member of council and as a candidate, uh, really are very simple. Um, it's that we're, um, that I support a strong public education system. Safe neighborhoods and supporting public safety professionals. Good jobs and a vibrant economy. I'm a pro-business, pro-community member of city council. Resilient responses to recurrent flooding and sea level rise. Protecting our, uh, environment and coastal ecosystems. And a advocate for mental health reform. So I'd be love to talk with you more about all these things. Um, and then inclusive community, Virginia Beach must, um, build upon our progress and on our forward movement to, uh, become a community that truly, uh, warmly welcomes everyone who wants to visit, uh, work or do business or, or live in our, um, great community of Virginia Beach. And but it's not only about, uh, what we do, it's also very much about how we do it. And I'm a strong believer in civility and respect in public discourse and in everything we do. And as a member of council, as a candidate, um, I've pledged to extend, um, spirit of respect and dignity to every person that I encounter and work with. Um, I'm very concerned about the tone and tenor of public policy discourse in America and even in Virginia Beach. And, um, I think we can improve that by treating everyone with the dignity that we all deserve. And so, um, obviously as a business organization, it's principally, um, interest, uh, of interest to you about our policies toward, uh, businesses, both small and large. And, um, as I mentioned before, I'm, uh, uh, unapologetically a pro-business candidate and member of council. And I support policies that, um, promote an environment of, uh, low taxes and low regulation. And we have a good, uh, business environment in Virginia Beach, but we do have some work to do in order to improve it. Including by supporting, um, new opportunities in Virginia Beach while not overlooking the ones we, we already have. Of course, we have a vibrant economy related to our tourism, environment, um, military, agricultural. But there are some new, um, opportunities on the horizon, as we all know with the, um, the cables that are coming from overseas as well as offshore wind. I'm a strong proponent of offshore wind, both for the clean energy, the, um, technology represents and, and also for the economic impact it can have for Virginia Beach residents. Obviously, the environment, the, the COVID, um, situation that we're facing is very serious and has significantly impacted Virginia Beach businesses and residents. And, uh, we've done some good things to, um, to, uh, to help businesses through, for example, through with and residents, um, with deferring the, um, the, uh, personal property tax and property tax, um, payments and eliminating meals taxes for the months of May and June. And by distributing CARES Act funding to businesses. And making some economic development grants available to Virginia Beach businesses. But we have more work to do and we have particularly more work to do to make sure that we reach all Virginia Beach businesses. And I've been a big proponent of that in our conversations, um, with the city administration to make sure that we're equitably distributing those resources and those opportunities to all Virginia Beach businesses. And, and that's an ongoing challenge. Um, Virginia Beach is a city that's a, or a coastal community. We live with water and we, we all, we always have and we always will and we know that. But at the end of the day, it's, um, just a simple fact that, uh, many Virginia Beach residents live in fear that our homes will flood. And we, and we shouldn't have to live in that fear. And, um, particularly in the Rose Hall District where I represent, has been significantly impacted by flooding related to stormwater. Uh, it was the district that was most significantly impacted by Hurricane Matthew in 2016. And, um, I'm committed to investing the highest percentages possible in our budget toward mitigating the impacts of recurrent flooding and sea level rise. And that includes with both flood control projects, major flood control projects. We have some, uh, really remarkable and exciting opportunities on the horizon, including the Stormwater, uh, Park at Bo Creek. But also we have to invest more substantially in maintenance and operations. And that's something that I've advocated for on council and that's something that we delivered in our last budget that was approved in May. Which is that we're going to accelerate the maintenance program for the existing infrastructure. Because I think many residents would, would be encouraged if the system simply worked at the capacity for which they were designed. And in many cases, they don't. And we should expect the bare minimum that the systems that exist work. And then find ways to improve upon them. So we're, we're moving forward in that direction and, and I'm proud of the contributions that I've made on that front. Mike, go ahead, Ron.
We, um, man, that's incredible. We're, uh, we're joined today with, uh, Councilman Mike Berlucci. He is the, uh, Rose Hall Councilman. Uh, he was elected in 2019. Uh, he has shown to be a great leader here in Virginia Beach, a breath of fresh air, we call it. Haven't been in politics for a long time. We, we see a lot of leaders. You've got the, the eagle eye, we say. Um, as part of your platform, you talked about, uh, earlier, you talked about having a, uh, making Virginia Beach more vibrant, having a better economy, uh, opportunities for all. Can you talk a little bit about, you know, the small, city small business initiatives? Uh, and you could, you could pivot from there and talk about, uh, some of the small women and minority issues that the city has faced. Uh, I remember being on city council, we tackled that and we put aspirational goals and I think that served as a foundation for, for what you're doing. But clearly there's a lot of needs. Uh, City of Virginia Beach is really diverse and, uh, you've taken the lead on some of those issues. Can you talk about those issues?
Yeah, I'd love to.
Initiatives? Thanks.
Small businesses, as has been stated many times, is really the backbone of our economy, but not just our economy, our culture. Businesses is part of what defines a community. And so, and, and, and it also, they provide an opportunities for individuals and families to find success, to, um, achieve their dreams, to reach their goals and to provide for their families. And so it's incumbent upon us to do everything we can to foster an environment where, where Virginia Beach residents can be successful. And so, um, one of the things that, um, we, we know that exists is there are disparities. That was demonstrated by the disparity study. That was completed and included a set of recommendations. And during a period where we were facing a $67 million budget shortfall, our city council in the last budget funded all of the recommendations that were, um, included in the disparity study. And that includes things, for example, as, um, establishing a small women and minority owned business office where resources would be available. It includes prioritizing, um, contracts and subcontracts with the city. It includes, um, a number of resources that would be available to SWAM businesses. To make sure that, uh, an environment of equity exists and that people have opportunity. Um, during the, um, economic impacts of, uh, the COVID era, the city of Virginia Beach, as, as we've discussed, has, um, made a number of, um, grants and, and other, uh, financial relief opportunities available to small businesses. Uh, but at the end of the day, those, um, well, obviously the SWAM priorities are extremely important. And addressing the disparities that exist are critical and long overdue. But, uh, I would say in addition to, to those priorities, it's important that we create an environment where all businesses have a chance to succeed. And we do that by making, uh, uh, sure that our, um, that, that our city government is one that is easy to work with. Where regulations are as low as possible and that, um, there's a low tax environment for residents and for businesses and.
Mike, I'm glad you said that. I mean, a lot of the, uh, detriments to small business, uh, having been a small business owner for many years is uh, government regulation, um, access to capital, uh, and, uh, more importantly, um, a city where it believes in strong business, uh, approaches. You know, we, we're seeing in this COVID, COVID times, a lot of, you know, you've got a lot of teleworkers now. You know, folks need permits, uh, folks need business license. You've seen some hangups in there. Uh, so is the city putting more resources, maybe more funding? Maybe some new innovation with regards to how they do the permitting process or, um, you know, the, uh, the planning process per se?
Well, I mean, I think that the, um, the, the men and women who serve Virginia Beach do a great job. And I do get, um, I do get a lot of positive feed, feedback from, uh, business leaders about the, um, about the permitting department and, and, um, and planning. However, you're right. I mean, there are, there are many examples when, when progress is delayed and, um, and we, we absolutely have to improve upon that. It's difficult to hire municipal workers now. And so one of the challenges that we are facing is that we're going to have to find a ways to incentivize, um, people to come into the city workforce to make, to fill those positions. Um, but I think what council has to do, and I think we have, um, we have to emphasize is that uh, we're going to, we're going to be a pro-business community and that, um, and that our city departments really understand that. Um, that assisting businesses through those process without delay, without, um, encumbering, um, their movement with, um, overly burdensome regulations and, and, um, red tape is critical. And, uh, we, we do have room for improvement, but we're, we're, we're doing a great job there and, and will continue to.
I, I think, um, our community has seen some of the pro-business initiatives that you and, uh, the Virginia Beach City Council has done. Um, yeah, earlier during the COVID crisis, uh, council froze the restaurant meals tax. Uh, they implemented small business COVID grants. Do you foresee some of that, those initiatives continuing, uh, particularly, you know, because COVID still exists and we're still not out of the, out of the, the force yet on those things?
Yes, the, I, I think I, I'm a hundred percent open to a discussion about the meals tax. We suspended meals taxes for the months of May and June. And, um, we, we received a lot of positive feedback from restaurants about that. And I would be, um, uh, very, very happy to consider what the impacts of that would be and if, and if that has a positive impact on restaurants to continue that or, or, or to idolize it. That's something that I'll be very open to. Um, but I think what we're moving into now is, um, is a period of making CARES Act funding, which is money that was directed toward municipalities through the Commonwealth of Virginia, um, through the, through the CARES Act. Um, to, and it's specifically designed to provide a number of relief to municipalities, but also of course to, um, businesses and residents of those municipalities. So we're, we're in the process now of making those resources available through our Department of Economic Development. As I mentioned before, one of the great challenges is to make sure those resources are distributed equitably. And that everyone in Virginia Beach has a fair and equal chance and opportunity to apply for those grants and to have access to that relief. Going back to the point about disparities, we know that disparities do exist. If you're, if you're a business or resident who's plugged into the system, who's part of the, um, established business community, you're going to have a more, um, likely chance of being aware of those grants. And, and, um, and if you're not, you're going to have a less likely chance. And so it's a priority to me, back to speaking to that, um, spirit of inclusion and making sure that everyone has a chance to succeed and fulfill their full potential, that we're, we're taking proactive measures to engage the community, to spread that information and to make sure that everyone, whether you're a SWAM business, not a SWAM business, a very, very small business, has an equal and fair chance to get access to that relief. I have a friend who owns a business who didn't even, wasn't even, she's struggling. And wasn't even aware that these relief opportunities existed. And so that tells me we're not, we're not hitting the mark. And we have to make sure that we're reaching everyone and we're making sure that those resources are, are, um, really fairly available.
Mike, you're the, uh, community, um, relations manager for the, the Chrysler Museum, beautiful facility. Uh, one of the crown jewels here in Hampton Roads. We, uh, we have seen nonprofit organizations take a brutal hit during this COVID crisis. How is the Chrysler Museum and other, uh, how do you think other nonprofits are, are handling, um, the COVID crisis? And where do you see them moving forward?
I really appreciate that question because I think that it's, um, it's, uh, one of the most, it's just a, a very, very important topic that's often overlooked, particularly in, in the COVID area. Nonprofits are so critical to not only the economic health of our community, but the, um, but the, um, social, um, health as well, because, uh, nonprofits are effectively, um, they're businesses as well. Provide jobs, people work there. As you mentioned, I work for a nonprofit. So not only do they provide services upon which many residents rely, but they also provide employment and contribute to our economy. So maintaining a healthy, um, and, uh, a landscape of nonprofits is critical and is really going to be, um, a hundred percent, um, a component of moving our, you know, getting out of this impacts of COVID. Um, nonprofits provide critical services, um, not only in, in terms of enjoying things like arts and culture, but also, um, providing social services and, um, like, for example, the Y, uh, the YWCA or the Samaritan House, um, services on, on, upon which many of the people who are, um, who need help the most rely and they're suffering greatly. I'm happy to say the CARES Act funding includes a provision to support nonprofits. Um, we're a very giving, a loving, kind community. I think Virginia Beach was voted to be the most kind community, just not long, just a few months ago. And so, um, nonprofits are beneficiaries of, um, really generous donations from Virginia Beach residents. And I know they'll continue to be, but if Virginia Beach residents are suffering because of the, um, impacts of COVID or downturn in the economy, they may have less resources to donate to those nonprofits. So it's really important that, um, it's very, very important that we support nonprofits and, um, and they're struggling, we're all struggling.
I think our, our, thank you, Mike. I, I think our, our coastal region particularly faces, uh, some, some challenges. Uh, you've been championing, um, some, to an issue that's been near and dear in my heart. Uh, when I was on council on the General Assembly, you know, I was one of the guys that put forth, you know, initiatives towards coastal flooding and sea level rise. Um, it's true, our, our region floods, um, and a lot of folks don't realize a lot of the inner, uh, districts flood even worse. Uh, Rose Hall's been particularly, hey, you talked about the hurricane several years ago. You've, uh, helped to initiate, um, uh, initiatives, particularly funding. Um, can you talk about that and, and some of the other projects that the city of Virginia Beach has implemented to help protect residents and small businesses?
Yeah, well, flooding is one of the most important issues that we face, as we know. Uh, Virginia Beach has a, just a variety of different types of flooding. There's flooding that occurs from stormwater and from deteriorating infrastructure. We experience, um, really coastal flooding and tidal flooding. And in the southern part of Virginia Beach, that, that, um, tidal flooding is related to winds coming from Back Bay. So each of these challenges requires a different strategy and approach. And the city, um, as I'm sure you, you're familiar with, has, um, engaged the services of the Dewberry Company, um, who have, have conducted a, a major study and review of many of the issues we face. I think as we continue along, I think new challenges are going, going to emerge. But even, uh, where we sit today, I think it's safe to say that the responses to address the variety of different flooding challenges we face in Virginia Beach will cost, um, more than $4 billion, which is something that the residents of Virginia Beach cannot afford to address. We have stuff to be honest about that. Um, we have invested the highest percentages of funding toward flood control projects and improved maintenance and operations. But really addressing the challenges is going to require a more comprehensive approach than what our budget can absorb. It's going to require the support and cooperation of the federal government. It's going to require the Commonwealth of Virginia to step up to the plate and fund responses to recurrent flooding, sea level rise. And this is a, a challenge that's being experienced throughout the Commonwealth. So it'd be very expensive for Virginia as well, but we need support from those other higher levels of government. And I think the, uh, people of Virginia Beach, uh, should have a chance to consider if they want to invest more in, 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 um, flood control projects and maintenance and operations. There's a discussion about whether or not to have a bond referendum in the future. And I think that's an interesting proposition. It's one that I'm learning more about and considering. And I think it's good to have a participatory discussion about what makes the most sense for Virginia Beach in terms, uh, in terms of flooding. And I, and, and I want to be transparent and clear, I'm not an engineer. And I, and I'm suspicious of people who claim to be engineers and, and, and have specific, um, infrastructure proposals. I think it's really incumbent upon us to rely on the experts and residents because at the end of the day, it's the Virginia Beach residents, those of us who live here, we know where flooding occurs. We know what's going on in their neighborhoods, um, better than engineers from outside. So we've got to work together, residents and experts, to identify the problems and formulate the solutions. Um, and so I really consider it as a member of council, which is a policymaking body, the principal responsibility to prioritize, to make sure the resources are available in order to fund those projects. We're, we, we've come a long way. The, I'm sorry to say, the maintenance and operations, uh, was neglected for many, many years. And there's, you know, I'm not here to point you fingers, but there, but there's, um, a lot of responsibility to go around there. But we're, we're making progress. And, um, and, and, and I think it's really important for policymakers to make sure the resources are available and then to rely on residents and experts to create those solutions. Another program that I think is very promising, and it's one that I've been a champion of on council, is CPACE, which is, um, stands for Commercial Property Assessed Clean Energy. And what this program does is it provides access to private capital for property owners to make uh, resiliency improvements on commercial properties. This could have a huge positive impact on flooding, on resiliency, and as well on, as on energy consumption and property values. So I really regard this as a win, 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 win. Um, I submitted a resolution which was adopted unanimously to study this program for feasibility and desirability of implementation in Virginia Beach. The study is complete. It's going to be presented to council. I think it's, I'm sure it's going to be favorable. Uh, and we're waiting on now the statewide, um, uh, program to help create the, um, procurement infrastructure needed in order to, uh, provide that capital. So in other words, um, it's, it's a program that is administered through a tax lien that provides upfront capital to make these improvements, which is increases property value, which, uh, which helps to, um, provide more enhanced revenues for the cities that we can direct toward some of these mitigation projects. And it improves resiliency. You can make stormwater improvements, energy efficiency improvements. Uh, it's just a really wonderful program and it's all privately managed, except for the pass-through on the, um, on the taxes. And so, um, that's something that I brought forward and I'm really proud of it.
I think, uh, our citizens and residents appreciate, uh, your honesty and your integrity and particular leadership on those issues. I remember being on city council and, uh, you know, I was an at-large rep. And, you know, my mantra was Virginia Beach is more than just the oceanfront. Um, you know, oceanfront is definitely a strong economic engine for the rest of the city. Do you see, uh, the city maintaining their strategic growth corridors? You know, in the city of Virginia Beach, we have what, uh, six to eight strategic corridors? Do, do you see the city still implementing that, that vision and, uh, versus, uh, putting in all of it, all of its eggs in, in the oceanfront, particularly with all the projects that are going down at the oceanfront, like the Surf Park, uh, the renovation of the Cavalier, um, you know, particularly properties at Rudy Loop and those kinds of things?
Well, uh, like with everything, I think we have to have fair and equitable distribution. But we have to support, we, of course, the, the, the resort is an important part of Virginia Beach, our economy and our culture. We're a beach community and we have to maintain a, um, a strong and healthy hospitality industry to maintain the quality of life. People from all parts of Virginia Beach, um, work at the oceanfront and, and many live there, of course. And so I don't want to diminish the importance or the impact of the oceanfront on our wonderful community of Virginia Beach. But you're right to say that Virginia Beach is a very, um, large and, um, and diverse community, um, in terms of lifestyles, in terms of neighborhoods and in terms of, um, uh, uh, you know, all the different amenities we have to offer. And it's one of the things I like about Virginia. You can live in a rural agricultural community. You can live in a suburban neighborhood. You can live in a more urban environment. Coastal, I mean, we've got it all, bayfront. And so, and that makes us very unique and it also makes us very strong. There are a number of corridors, strategic growth areas that are very important. One that I think is, um, often overlooked and is, um, really in need of some attention is the Lynnhaven area. There's a lot of really wonderful, vibrant businesses there. It's a great community. It's a, um, it's, it's a strong area of commerce. And yet it's, and it's sitting between the oceanfront and, and town center and it's often overlooked. So I think we need to pay more attention to what's happening at Lynnhaven. This great area, this great opportunity around town center, but really, and we know some of the wonderful things that are happening, for example, in the vibe, creative district. But we have to, um, expand those opportunities to all parts of the city. One thing that I'm particularly, um, keeping, keeping an eye on that I think is, uh, absolutely important is how we address the, um, really what amounts to aging commercial areas in Virginia Beach. We have shopping centers, we, in an environment where retail is diminished, many retail businesses are failing. We have, um, shopping centers and commercial parcels all over our city that are aging and in some cases deteriorating. So how are we going to revitalize those areas? Um, it may not be with big box stores. Um, it may not be with big box stores, anchor stores, and supporting retail. We might see those dynamics change. And if we're not careful, we could end up like uh, other communities and other cities around the country with areas that are blighted and. And 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 everything that comes with that. So as we think about strategic growth and um, being, and those, those. Uh, commercial areas exist all over the city, from Kempsville, Centerville, I know they're all, they're through the Rose Hall District. And including to the oceanfront. So I think that should be part of our strategic initiative, is what do we do with these huge parcels of commercial areas that are increasingly. Um, diminished.
Mike, in this segment, we, the last segment, we're going to talk about any issue you want to talk about. This is the, the wild card question where. You know, you could talk about uh, anything you want. This is your, your platform.
Well, once again, you know, we have a great city, great, wonderful people, and we've had a difficult year. I joined city council in May of two thousand nineteen, and just a few weeks later, we experienced the. Worst tragedy in the history of Virginia Beach on May thirty first. Not long after that, our city manager resigned. And then we experienced a global crisis with COVID. And so it's been a very challenging time to enter public service in Virginia Beach, but also a very rewarding time because we see the people of Virginia Beach. Step forward to the challenge, connect with each other. Sorry, of course, I didn't even, didn't include the matters of um. Black Lives Matter movement and the responses to the social issues that we face up today. So it's, we have a lot happening. But it also reveals the the great opportunities that exist. And in order to, I think, move our community forward, we've got to focus on the issues that are most important to Virginia Beach residents. And that um, and and what I've, everything that I've been told in the years that I've been a candidate now for office. Is that those um, issues that we described in the beginning are are what Virginia Beach residents think about every day. Think about their jobs, their schools. Whether their community is safe. How connected we are and supportive of each other. That we have a clean, beautiful community, and those are the issues that I'm going to continue to focus on. But at the end of the day. Those policies and attracting and retaining businesses is only as good as the strength of our community. And that's why inclusion is an important, that's not a buzzword, that's not a, that's not a tagline. If we're genuinely and truly inclusive and that everyone has a chance to succeed here, not only will we become stronger from within. But businesses will be more likely to relocate here or to maintain their presence here. No corporate business, large or small. Wants to be part of a community that's divided, where there's racial or other tension. And so it's, we have to take care of each other. We have to work together in a spirit of kindness and collaboration to make sure that. We're strong individually and as neighbors. And also that we're an environment where everyone knows that they have a chance to find their own success and to fulfill their own potential. That's why I wanted to serve on council. When I grew up here, I looked out into the world and I saw disparity. It was clear to me, based on my own personal experiences and those of my friends. And many, we lose a lot of great talent in Virginia Beach, to markets and to other communities where people perceive they're going to have a. Greater chance to find their success. And so it's our responsibility to make sure or that we are addressing those things that I mentioned. To make sure that we are creating an environment where people are valued, where we're respected, we each. Are treated with the dignity we all deserve and that we have a chance to succeed. And that's why, what inspires me to public service. And that's really why I hope Virginia Beach voters will give me a chance to continue serving for four more years.
If uh, folks wanted to get in touch with you, Mike, how can they get in touch with you?
Really easy. You can email me at Michael Berlucci at yahoo dot com. Visit my website, Berlucci for council dot com. Visit me on Facebook, um, Councilman Michael Berlucci, or Instagram. I'm everywhere.
Councilman Michael Berlucci, we're honored to have you uh, with the Coastal uh, Virginia Chamber of Commerce. Helping to uh, answer questions, define public policy for the residents of our region and our city. Uh, we appreciate you very much. And uh, we wish you uh, success in your endeavors. Thanks, Mike, for being with us today.
Thanks, I appreciate it.